If you're ready, everybody ready? All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Seabrook School Board meeting for January 12th, 2021. I need to read the emergency declaration from the governor's office. As Chair of the Seabrook School Board, I find that due to the state emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order, 2020 dash or this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporary contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are we're utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Seabrook School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through this platform and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and if necessary participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, 646-876-9923 and webinar ID 92181504829, or by clicking on the following website address. It is We previously gave notice to the public and necessary information for accessing the meeting, including how to access a meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website SU21office@subu21.org. If anybody has a problem, please call 603-926-8992, extension 103, or email at revans@sa21.org. In the event that public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start this meeting by taking a roll call attendance and also please state whether there's someone else in the room, which is required under the right to know law. Thank you.
Forrest Carter. Jennifer Hubbard.
Here with family.
Jessica Brown. Kelly Huber.
Here with family, sorry.
That's okay. I saw you going so. And Mike Rabideau.
I hear no one at this point.
Okay, I have the roll call taken.
Okay. Next, I'd like to start the meeting with the pledge allegiance is always sort of awkward because everybody has to stand for it, but please bear with us. You can either turn your video off or do whatever you prefer to do.
Can I interrupt just a moment? I do see the forest is here, so I'm going to promote him as a panelist.
Okay.
Add him to the roll call.
All right.
Sorry.
Welcome Forrest, you missed the best part.
I always do. What's going on guys?
Okay, we're on, we're on and running and this the the full intro of the emergency meeting stuff. So we're going to start with the pledge of allegiance. Oh. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberties and justice for all. Just as a quick note, we always say the pledge of allegiance, but I think now it's more important to really listen to it and understand it. So I thank you all for being here this evening. And the next agenda item is public comment on any of the items that are on the agenda this evening. Rhonda, do we see anyone that possibly from the public would want to make a comment regarding the agenda items?
We do have eight people in attendance. I would just ask those eight people if they would like to make a public comment, use the raise your hand button in Zoom and then that way we will know that you have a comment to make. And then we would also ask if you are going to make a comment that you state your full name, address and your relationship to the school. And as I'm saying that, I don't see anybody selecting the raise the hand feature mic. So.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next is the approval of the meeting minutes for December 8th, our regular meeting. Does anyone have any comments regarding that particular meeting? All right. Bear with me having issues here. There we go. Okay. Do I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes as posted?
I'll make a motion to accept them as posted.
Thank you. Do I have a second please?
I don't believe I was there for that meeting.
Yeah, I don't think you were.
I'll second that.
Kelly, you were there actually. I'm just, that's okay. All right, Carter, you're seconding. Thank you. Rhonda, would you please take a vote?
Sure. Forrest Carter?
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
Kelly Huber?
Yes.
And Mike Rabideau.
Yes, thank you very much.
I have the roll call taken.
All right, some reason. All right. Next is the finance report for Matt Ferrera.
Thank you. So we have attached the year dates expenditure and revenue reports. Both are tracking well. I will know on the revenue side. As I've been in prior board meetings, we did receive CARES-ESR funds from the CARES Act, federal stimulus package. That was, that was earlier in the year, just over $200,000. Subsequently, as part of that same that federal legislation, we did, we were allocated funds via the supplemental public school response act or fund. And that was, that was administered through the state and they allocated $200 per student per school. And now there is a third round of stimulus funds, well not third, second round, but third, you know, funding source for us. And that was the most recent federal stimulus package that was passed. And they are, we are, we do understand that we'll be receiving approximately four times the amount that we received the first CARES Act. And we do anticipate that'll be the same process. You know, where it does, it is required that we'll, we'll utilize, utilize it for COVID related expenditures. I assume it will be for, it will be required that they won't, it cannot be used for budgeted items or already budgeted items. I mean, there will be a longer time horizon to be able to utilize these funds. So this is a good source of revenue that we will plan to utilize as we go through this year and into next year. As you know, we have had expenditures related to COVID, whether it's disinfecting and cleaning supplies, PPE such as masks and gloves and face shields. And then technology, we've had a significant investment in technology to be able to operate either remote or the ability to go remote when we've had to quarantine students amongst a number of other expenditures related to COVID. So, so this is good news and we do anticipate receiving instructions as to exactly how we'll be able to utilize those funds shortly. However, that's, that's the initial indicator. This point. So I'm happy to answer any questions in regard to expenditures, revenue or these new, this new revenue source via the stimulus package. Think you're on mute, Mike?
Sorry about that. How are we going with expenditures at this point? I know it's early in the in the game, but I see legal is over and I see a couple of the others. Are we, are we okay overall?
Yeah, we're doing well overall. We're tracking. You know, we're on track to finish this year with with available funds. You'll see under special education, we're over budget as a whole by, you know, you know, $20,000 for right for, for special education specific expenses. And then under, you know, there's also special education, transportation costs. And we're over budget by about $80,000 in special education transportation. And then you'll, you'll see that, you know, there's some, some other accounts where we're, you know, slightly over budget, whether that's technology or our buildings accounts. But, but overall, we, you know, we've been able to utilize those CARES-ESR funds to supplement these extra costs. And we're in good shape. You know, particularly since we know that this, this extra round of funding is coming shortly.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have questions and such for Matt? Well, all right. Thank you very much, sir. Okay. The next one is our second read on the policies and also approval. We've been through this meeting before. We've been through this at the joint board meeting. And unless we have questions regarding the policies as listed, I would take a motion to approve and accept or adopt all of them as listed.
I'll second the motion.
Is that a, are you making the motion, Kelly?
No, I thought he said he was looking for someone to accept the motion.
I can make the motion. That's fine. That's okay. I wasn't very clear. I'm sorry. Yes. No further discussions. Rhonda, would you please take a vote?
Mike Rabideau?
Ah, yes.
Kelly Huber?
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
Forrest Carter?
Yes.
I have that vote recorded.
All right. Thank you all very much. I appreciate that. I know there's, there's quite a few policies and we've been through this before. So we're in good, good shape. Next is the elementary schools plan and current update, please.
Prior to, to the school plans, if it's okay with you.
Oh yes, please.
Dr. Hobbs has, has an update about the superintendent's search.
Oh.
Thank you. You requested that we provide the board and the community an update on that. So I wanted to to have that as part of our reports tonight, if that's okay with you.
Right. Didn't see it on the agenda. I think it was skipped over, but thank you. Dave, you're on.
Sure. Thanks. Well, since we had such a successful search for the interim, we figured it's time to start up a permanent search immediately. So I'll just give you guys an overview of kind of timeline and process. And I'm happy to respond to any questions that, that we do have. First of all, you're all aware that we've contracted with NHSBA and the Brian Group in order to act as a facilitator slash consultant for the process of a permanent superintendent. In terms of timeline, that means actually last week, we sent two separate emails one to faculty and staff for volunteers of people that would be willing and able to participate on the committee. We sent a second email out to parents and community members. We had a robust response. I think we had 49 as of now people that stepped forward that wanted to participate in the committee. So, so that, that was a great indicator. This week what we're doing is trying to whittle that, that big group of people down into a workable, manageable committee that is obviously still well represented across all of our SAU. We do have board participation and since it went so well last time, we've got Jen as Jen Hubbard as a liaison for Seabrook.
Thank you, Jen.
Appreciate it. So moving forward, what we're going to do is like I said, whittle this committee down and next week together an orientation for those on the committee and start working with the Brian Group to articulate a vision for what we want in a permanent superintendent. And hopefully come up with a job description that, that suits the SAU. I think, I think that, that dovetails nicely frankly with the joint board meeting that's coming up late January, where we can have more of a robust conversation about what the school board sees as important characteristics of a superintendent. So I'll leave it there. And like I said, I'm happy to respond to any questions or just provide updates as needed.
Dave, as a reminder to the school board members for Seabrook, that they should bring their items of interest, concern, whatever for, or to be included at the joint board meeting next, next week, right?
Yeah, it seems like that's going to be the lion's share of the conversation at that joint board.
Great. Thank you. Great. Caroline, do you have any additional updates, information you'd like to share?
No, thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, then I guess we're on to Stephanie, please.
Good evening, everybody. So not much to update. We've just been continuing to implement our plan. So we're still offering the five days a week in person, five days remote through the learning academy. We did have the three classrooms added for the second trimester. And thank you to all the staff that made that possible and students are doing well, adjusting and schedules going well. Staffing still, you know, continues to be a challenge each day. You know, definitely with, you know, so many kind of quarantines because of family members or contacts outside of here. But we've been able to navigate through that and I've had a great team here supporting and, you know, a lot of support from the SAU to try to figure out how best to continue to provide these models to our students. So so things are going well. You know, I just can't thank my staff and, and the parents and guardians and community members enough for supporting us to make this all possible. And one thing I know I had some questions on recently was in terms of our current situation. So as you know, on Saturday evening, we had, we were notified about a positive case in our school, which impacted us in a way where we had to quarantine a class and two buses. And there have been some questions that have come up around quarantining a whole bus. And I just wanted to let people know that we, you know, I've obviously consult with Caroline as the superintendent and we talk this through and make these decisions very carefully, taking into all different factors. So we look at the time of a possible exposure. So when a person might have been possibly contagious. And so what was that length of time? Was it a number of days or was it just one bus ride? Who, you know, the seating arrangements on the bus and also we could take into consideration bus stops and getting on and off the bus. Knowing that, you know, some bus stops and some gathering points, kids may not have their masks on, be six feet distanced. So we kind of look over what we have control over and what we might not have to and making sure that we're cautious and being as, as safe as possible. One question that has come up is in terms of the drivers of those buses. So we've been working with first students and they have, we have the seat behind the driver always vacant. So that they have a buffer from the students and obviously they're not factored into the bus stops and getting on and off the bus collectively as a group. So their situation is a little bit different. So obviously we work with the bus company in terms of quarantining those buses. And in most cases, recently, we have not had to quarantine the drivers. But that has raised some questions because oftentimes those drivers are used on other routes. So people who associate a certain driver with a bus, all of a sudden seeing them, wait, I thought that bus was quarantined and the driver showing up on another bus. That's with careful, you know, consideration on that. But that is a slightly different situation than the students. So I know that there have been some questions on that. And in terms of the status of those classes, so everyone will be back next Tuesday, Monday is a holiday. So the timing of this impact really just required a quarantine for these five school days because there had been the kind of 10 day clock had started last week. So by the time we find out the testing results, we're into the 10 days. So all students should be back next Tuesday in full session. If there's any questions, I know my model hasn't changed that much since our last meeting.
Thank you for clarifying the issue with the, the bus driver. Obviously, there's a lot of questions out there about how it's implemented many times. Once a case is identified and all of the procedures have to be gone through and worst case scenarios, but thanks very much for that. And thank you Caroline for also looking into that.
Absolutely. My pleasure. Stephanie and, and the staff really worked hard on that very quickly. So I'll give the, the credit to the Seabrook staff.
Great. Thank you. Board members, we have any questions at this point? None? Okay. I believe we'll move on to Aaron, please.
Hey, thank you. I'm excited to be able to report out on two great days of having students in person. We started yesterday. It's pretty crazy when the first, it feels like the first day of school in January, but we have arrived at the first day of school yesterday. So we had fifth and seventh grades in yesterday and today. Both days went great. Kids were happy to be there. It was nice to see smiling faces. Students worked hard on kind of following the protocols we put into place, listening to the reminders for a six, giving six foot distance. That's a tricky one. So it's going to take them some time to get used to that, but they're, they're doing a great job with reminders. And just to kind of back up, we worked really, sorry for the dogs that gave them raw hides, hoping, hoping they will be quiet while I talk. We worked hard and tirelessly and just want to give a shout out to all of the appropriate people and, and hope that I don't miss anyone, but facilities has been amazing. Setting up the classrooms, you know, they went through a lot of this with the elementary school already, but hadn't, we didn't have a need for that yet in the middle school, but just making the classroom set up and marked out appropriately. So the desks stay in the right place and removing extra furniture. So there's not crowding and marking the the hallways so that kids have an idea of what six feet is and just signs for reminders and anything we needed really. The facilities crew has been amazing. The cafeteria staff had to suddenly add two grade levels of deliveries of food and breakfast in the morning and then lunch delivery and did so with smiles and have been great working with us to make that happen. The teachers have been preparing for now managing remote class, a remote class, some grade levels have two remote groups, two have two remotes and one has one remote. But managing in-person classes and remote classes and reshuffling schedules and reshuffling kids as their needs have changed and families' needs have changed and just being flexible and, and being ready and asking questions and just doing what they can to welcome kids in. So really, I just feel lucky to be working with such amazing staff and we're just surrounded. It was a team effort for sure, but I feel, I came home yesterday feeling just really good about how the first day went. And I think we, we planned and prepared and I think we were ready and I, I think it went well and sixth and eighth grade will come on Thursday and then we'll add every other Wednesdays in a couple of weeks. And like I said, the kids are just, are happy to be here and I, I think it's going to work well.
Thank you very much for putting this all together and, and also getting it started. I know, like you said, it's like, it's a brand new school year as far as all the teachers and the kids are concerned. And it had to have been difficult. I mean, you're just not talking about walking into a full classroom. You're talking about segmenting everybody, the cohorts and everything. You've done a great job. I really, and I think the community appreciates it too. Anybody would like to comment on that report? Okay, I think that we're.
I, can I just?
No, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
No, that's okay. Erin, I did, I did hear and see a lot of things yesterday on Facebook that the kids had a great time and there was a lot of positive comments. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you. That's nice to hear.
Yes, great. Thank you.
Yeah, it's always good to hear without a doubt. I'm sure there are a lot of parents out there who have a sigh of relief that we're heading sort of back to normal, which it's going to take a while, but one little step at a time with this whole situation. But thanks.
Yes, sure. And it's certainly not without challenges for parents. I do want to recognize where we have the two grade levels in, it works for some families and unfortunately, some families have their kids in on different days, which you know, I spoke with a parent who has a fifth grader, a seventh, an eighth grader and a Winnicott student. And they're all on different days. And so I know that they're still, families are still having to manage some tough times, but it's a start for sure.
It's not normal, but it's better than it was.
Great.
Anything else Caroline, you would like to add to that?
I would just like to give, you know, major kudos. I know, you know, I've heard from other schools, it's like, like you said, the first day of school. And I met with the nurses today and Jordan is thrilled to see students. Your school nurse is phenomenal. I think she's on the call and it's just a ton of work, extra things to coordinate. And so I want to give a shout out to Jordan.
I would wholeheartedly concur. She has been phenomenal. We've been very lucky to have her and her expertise.
Okay, super. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on. The next item we put in. Well. Oh, meeting attendance, I'm sorry. One of the things coming up in the near future are a number of meetings for the delivery session and such. And I just want to emphasize that we need the board members, you know, all of us a quorum to accomplish what we're going to be setting forward and also to assist Matt with his presentation and supporting everything that has to be done. Up, up and coming are the obviously joint board sessions and such. And it's just going to be a very, very busy spring, I think. And as a, as a board, we need to represent ourselves in all of these meetings. We'll skip over to the personnel at this point.
You see the donation there also?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I missed that one completely.
I can speak to that one.
Yes, please.
The, the middle school received a very nice donation from, I think it was to the, to both schools from Unitil for $197.50. So I just wanted to thank Unitil for their donation. It looks like it's the donation comes directly from the Exeter Office Local Donations Committee. So there's people at Unitil who decide where to donate some money that they raise and it went to us. So we appreciate that very much.
Yes, that's great. I also noted in their letter that they normally hand deliver these pods at the possible school board meeting. And this year because of COVID and everything else, they weren't able to, but we'd like to all thank them very much for their efforts for our community. All right. I guess I'll just go through the next meeting dates and then we'll go to non-public.
That makes sense.
Caroline, you want to read those off and emphasize where we're going to be?
For the meeting dates? Sure.
Yeah.
So we have a joint board policy committee meeting that is tomorrow night via Zoom. We have SU21 joint board meeting Tuesday, January 26th at 6:00 PM. We have the, our regular, our next regular school board meeting on February 1st. And then in the deliberative session, so we'll have the school board meeting via Zoom and then we'll have the deliberative in person. And where will that be in person, Matt?
Yeah. So the deliberate session will be in the gym like it has in, in previous years. We have been advised by legal counsel to make a few adjustments. So. We have been advised by legal counsel to make a few adjustments, so. They, our attorney, attorney Casassa has recommended that we keep the deliberative session short this year, so. We're gonna, they recommended no long presentations, so what we're gonna do is give a very brief summary of the budget. Read and then read the warrant article. The community will have the ability to to make public comment or make any changes that they they see fit, motions to make changes. Then we'll vote and and try to get out of there pretty quickly. Additionally, we are not allowed to. To force attendees to wear masks, so. We will have a separate area for any of our community members who do not wanna wear a mask or cannot. Wear a mask because of some type of physical or um, physical or medical reason. However, we we, so I just want you to be aware that we will be setting up the gym a little bit differently. We will be socially distancing chairs and having a specific area for people that decide that they do not wanna wear a mask, so.
Okay, great. Is there, just a clarification, is there actually a sign-in, check-in like we've had at the previous board meetings? I wanna comment.
So there'll be, so for the the deliberative session, there will be a, there will be a checklist supervisor that will check in. All the attendees to verify that they are residents of Seabrook. They, we will be setting up that table with plexiglass to protect them and to provide adequate. Because they will not be able to socially distance. But otherwise, it will be set up the same as they have in previous years, just with with plexiglass and they'll also have. Will also have masks available at that table for anyone that may have forgotten or or would like to wear one.
Okay, great, great. Only because it confused me, one clarification on our schedule that's shown on our agenda. The school board is on Monday and the delivery is on Tuesday, so just make sure it's all Monday, yeah. I looked at the Tuesday first and I assumed it was Tuesday, so, okay, we're good.
Good catch, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, I will correct that, sorry about that.
That's okay.
On the first.
I guess I'll take a motion, I think we're set with this. I take a motion to go into non-public under RSA ninety-one dash A three colon two A dash E. I'll make that motion.
One second.
Thank you. Jen has a second. Appreciate it. Rhonda, please take roll call.
Forrest Carter?
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
Kelly Huber?
Yes.
And Mike Rabado.
Yes, I'll see you all on the other side. Thank you.
Okay, that vote's recorded.
Now, was everybody leaving the meeting and coming back? Is there a difference in that? I can't, I don't see any shortcuts. I just can't seem to make it. I've gotta go through and find it on the phone because I need the number and such and the list goes on and on. Oops. That wasn't good. Okay. I'll make the motion to come back into public session. Non-public on RSA ninety-one dash A colon three.
One second.
Thank you. Rhonda, would please take the vote?
Forrest Carter?
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
Kelly Huber?
Yes.
Mike Rabado?
Yes.
The meeting has resumed at 5:11 PM.
Oh. Okay. The first one is. Letter of resignation from. Caitlin Plufner. And we'd like to accept that reservation with regrets. She would like to leave at the end of the school year. And I'll make that motion to accept it.
A second to motion.
Her motion and a second to accept the resignation. And a vote, please.
Forrest Carter?
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
Kelly Huber?
Yes.
And Mike Rabado?
Yes.
I have that vote recorded.
All right, and the second one is a leave of absence request. From. Courtney Sparks. I will. Make that motion to accept that, and this will be until further notice, obviously. Do I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Both of us.
Yeah. You can have it, Forrest.
There we go.
Mike Rabado?
Oops. Uh, yes.
And Kelly Huber?
Yes.
Jennifer Hubbard?
Yes.
And Forrest Carter?
Yes.
I have that vote recorded.
Great. Do we have any other further issues we'd like to discuss? Then I guess we're all set. And thank you all for coming and all I can say is Happy New Year and be safe. So, all right, thank you all.
Can I get a motion to?
I have a motion for a turn, yes. Anybody wanna make the motion? We can all say. All right, who's who's first?
All right, I'll make it. I'll make the motion.
All right, and a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right. All those in favor? Show of hands. We are out of here.
All right, that looks like unanimous. Thank you, everybody.
Bye, guys.
Thank you, everyone. Bye.
Bye.
Bye, thank you.
Hey, Rhonda?
Yes?
Did you get my letter?